Is it here on the agenda?
There it is.
Mm-hmm.
Where?
It is number nine. K, on agenda item K.
Charging off the one inch three.
Uh-huh. That's not what this document is for. It's charging off, um, according to this document, it's charging off court costs.
Okay, well, when we get to that, mention, when we get to that item, okay?
I'm wondering it because, is it a?
No, no.
Okay.
That's not.
Great.
Good evening and welcome to the Crestwell City Council meeting, June 12, 2023. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We begin tonight with a public forum, and if you've looked over the agenda tonight, you'll see that we do have a number of public hearings tonight. We do not have a public hearing tonight on the camping ordinance, which is the final item on the agenda. So each of the speakers tonight will, will speak during the public forum right now. Yes?
Mayor, we opened the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Excuse me, thank you. I will move that aside. Thank you, I saw Jim raise his hand, too. Okay, so we begin with the Crestwell Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and the opening item is to approve the minutes from the January 23, 2023 meeting. So council, is there anything in the minutes that need to be adjusted, corrected? If not, then I'm entertaining a motion for the minutes. Counselor Holt.
I, I just, I, I need to, I just want to comment on a couple things. One of the things is, these minutes are from the end of April. I don't know what our timeline is, but I'm sure hoping that we can work out somehow to get minutes earlier than June from April, because I know a lot of our constituents rely on these to be published in a timely manner.
I can address that if you'd like.
Uh-huh.
The minutes from that meeting were, that was a very long meeting, and Grace has been away at training, so it is unusual that the minutes aren't available. Generally, she does a really good job of turning around. However, at her training, she learned a bit more about how minutes can be prepared more quickly and provided to you in a more timely fashion, and we're going to talk about that at the public, at the, sorry, not the public hearing, at the work session.
Okay.
Later this month.
Okay. And then, and then, these minutes, because these minutes, I, I mean, they're, this particular set of minutes was kind of riddled with typos, formatting errors.
Are you talking about the minutes for the Urban Renewal Agency?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong, I did the same thing the mayor did. My apologies, I wasn't.
So we're on the minutes from the Urban Renewal Agency. So council, is there anything on these minutes that needs to be corrected? Okay, if not, I'm entertaining a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Counselor Clark.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
All right, is there a second? Counselor Shuck? Any further discussion? All right, council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All in opposition, same sign, motion passes unanimously. All right, so we move on to the public hearing. We have a public hearing on the Crestwell Urban Renewal Agency to receive comment on the proposed fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget as approved by the Budget Committee for the Urban Renewal Agency. Do we have anyone who's signed up to speak? Grace? All right, if not, then we will keep the public meeting open for one minute, and if you wish to speak on, on this item, please go to the back and get out, get a form, bring it up to Grace, and you will have your opportunity to speak. Public hearing is now open.
Slide that again. I need to find out, fill out a form to speak to you members about whatever this next item.
About the, no, about the Urban Renewal Agency.
Okay.
That's what we're dealing with currently.
Thank you.
Okay? Public hearing is now closed, so we will hear from Mr. Piper about the Urban Renewal Agency budget for the coming year. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor Stram, city councilors, members of the Urban Renewal Agency. The item we have before you is the, the budget for fiscal year 2324. This is the fifth fiscal year for budgeting the Crestwell Urban Renewal Agency. This year will see an increase of $35,641 in incremental tax, bringing total division of taxes to $96,170 for the coming fiscal year. There's $10,000 budgeted for materials and services related to auditing, reporting for that annual report that's required, and for some engineering services. The $24,320 is the debt service payments related to the $225,000 interfund loan from the general fund to purchase the roadway for the future development of a roadway for the Crestwell Urban Renewal Plan. As you know, each year, we, the, the city must pass a budget to expend monies, and the resolution for you, UR 2023-01, I noticed in review that there was a scripter's error on item four, it should read 2023, 2024, not 2022, 2023 budget. And other than that, it should be pretty simple and self-explanatory. Are there any questions from the council?
Okay, there, are there any questions? If not, council, any discussion about this item? If not, I'm entertaining a motion on the Crestwell Urban Renewal Agency budget 2023-24. Counselor Castillo.
I move to approve resolution UR 2023-1, a resolution adopting the Crestwell Urban Renewal Agency budget for fiscal year 2023, 24 as presented.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Second from Counsel Osborne, any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. With that, I will close the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. And now I will open the Crestwell City Council agenda, and the gentleman here raised a very good question, we have a lot of items on the agenda tonight, so do we have the agenda printed and back on the table? So if you did pick up an agenda that's on the back table when you came in, you might want to pick one up now, and that'll help as we move through it where you'll have an understanding of where we're at and where you want to speak, because there's a lot of items on the agenda tonight.
Thank you.
And I'll try to be very clear and explain as we go.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. So now we move to the public forum, and we have three individuals who.
When do we have an opportunity to ask to change an item on the agenda or to change spots? Is that before the public forum?
Let's wait until we get to after the mayor's report. Okay? So we have the public forum, we have three people who signed up to speak. Speakers have three minutes and come to the podium here and tell us your name, and have your address here already. So our first speaker is Lori Eichelberger.
Good evening. My name's Lori Eichelberger, and I live over on the east side of Crestwell. I brought a visual aid tonight. I installed the first one of eight of these in our neighborhood tonight at the footbridge that connects Garden Lake Park and our common areas in our neighborhood. I've lived in that neighborhood for 10 years, and I never thought we'd have to do this, honestly. But given the current nature of what all the cities are having to deal with, I think this is going to become more commonplace, where people who have private property are going to have to be putting up signage to protect their property and also note that there's no camping allowed. After the last work session and when I heard from the sheriff about filing the no trespassing letter, I went ahead and did that for our homeowners association as well, and I outlined, gave them the map and gave them the tax lot numbers of all of our common areas, and a sign is going on each one of those. So anybody who calls, they won't have to check with me, they can just automatically take care of business. So I did want to thank them for taking care of the situation a couple of weeks ago for us in a timely fashion. Given that, I know no matter what you decide tonight, enforcement is going to be an issue just for, you know, lack of bodies that we have that can't do enforcement at any given time. So I think that I would also like to see signage at Garden Lake Park that specifies when it's open and when it's closed, that it's not open at nighttime. It would be great if that gate got put back to keep people out of that parking lot at night, and if there was sweeps at night, because you know, right now, there's no enforcement going on even in the daytime. I walk through it there every day. Every day, there are people standing there fishing or hanging out, they got bottles of alcohol out in the open, they're smoking out in the open, they're breaking all the rules that are on cliffside. So I know it's going to be hard, the enforcement is, but, you know, on the one hand, like I said, I'm disappointed that we had to take this measure, but I understand, I understand what we're up against, so I'm just hoping that everybody will do their best. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Our next speaker is Jack Gradel.
Jack Gradel, and on the homeless situation, I don't like it, but with the court mandates that are coming down, we have to do something to put them somewhere in the city. I don't know where that's going to be, because it seems to be a lot of, not in my backyard. I have no idea where it's going to go, but I know if we don't do it, it's going to be a whole heck of a lot more expensive through the courts, through the legal system and everything else, and I think Portland's already lost that case, and they got a heck of a lot more money than this city does for legal fees. So one way or another, it's going to have to be solved in the city, and live with it. It's one of those little things about court mandates, you don't get away from them. There's just no way to get away from those kind of mandates, because they're going to come back and bite you in the bottom very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And our third speaker is Floyd Plummer.
Evening.
What's anyone?
Kind of a boring one. I'm asking for a variance on a music ordinance for August 19th to Saturday for one hour, from nine o'clock to 10 o'clock, is to cut off a band, we own the Roundup Saloon. I have a letter from a neighbor, that's the only homeowner, attached to the property saying she's okay with it. That's all I got.
Thank you, so I'm going to direct you to be in contact with our city manager on that.
Michelle?
Michelle.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make sure that was in the, in August?
August 19.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Nine to 10 p.m. at the Roundup Saloon.
It'll be from like six to 10, just an extra hour for the band to play.
The variance is from nine to 10.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so then, now we come to the mayor's report, and there's no mayor's report tonight. So now Counselor Holt was requesting a, go ahead, will you request, Counselor Holt?
I am hoping that we can move item L and have it become item C or D.
Okay, well.
Move everything down when I think that many of the people here are here for that, and I don't want to keep them here until 11 at night.
Okay.
Well, we'll wait.
Hey, I tried to do you a favor, but that's okay.
All right, Counselor President Castillo and I set the agenda this way, but I will open it up to the council, let's just have a vote. Would you like to readjust the agenda tonight to move item L up to, say, after C, or leave the agenda intact? All those who would like to move the agenda, please raise your hand. All those in favor, leave the agenda as is? Okay, so that, the majority vote was to move the agenda, so we will move item L and put it after C. Okay, so now we are on to item number three, and I'm asking if there's any council comments about the correspondence we received. Manager Amber.
Hello, Mayor, there was a typo on the name for Mary Ellen, it should be Mary Ellen Stott.
Okay, thanks. All right, any, any council comments on correspondence? Counselor Holt.
I actually just want to thank everyone for the correspondence that we've been receiving lately. I appreciate it, and I'm a big champion of community involvement, and I like to see that picking up around here, so let's keep it up.
Counselor Castillo.
Yes, I, too, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's emailed. I try to respond to everyone, I hopefully I replied to everyone, sorry if I missed you, and yes, your voice matters, so thank you.
All right, so we move on to item number four, which is the consent calendar. All items are considered routine and are enacted by a single motion unless there is something that needs to be pulled for a change. Anything that needs to be pulled from the consent calendar? If not, then I'm entertaining a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented. Counselor Osborne?
I move that we accept the consent calendar as is.
Is there a second on the motion? Counselor Shuck? Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please raise your hand. All those in opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We move on to item D, item number five, which is the administrative report. Manager Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the administrative report are the bills. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to try and answer them. Doesn't look like there's any questions. The next item under administrative reports is the Lane County Sheriff's Call for Service Report, and Sergeant Speltrich is here to answer any questions you may have on that.
Hello, everyone. So if you look at the documents in the packet, you'll see that our calls for service are a little bit up this month. I, I attribute that to the, the heat starting to come out, people are starting to be out a little more. We also had a couple people kind of crop up on the radar that have some pretty extensive mental health issues that have generated a lot of calls for service for the sheriff's office, so there's a handful of them in the last month that have really taxed us a little bit, so other than that, I'm open to any questions, if anybody has any questions about the calls for service.
All right, council, any questions for Sergeant Speltrich? Counselor Shuck?
I had a question. One of my neighbors had a couple of people try to come over their fence into their backyard, and they called like the non-emergency line. Would that be reflected in your call report if a deputy was alerted?
Yes, so that would be included, and that would be categorized under the property for public order, depending on the details of the call.
Okay. And then if you couldn't find the person, I don't know what the outcome was, because I didn't talk to your deputy, but if you couldn't find the person, would it still remain as a call?
Yes.
On the log? And she asked me to ask you tonight how she would find out, like, what happened after they made the call? Is there a case? It's not a case number, because you don't find the person, if you don't find the person. So how does she, does she just give the date and contact you to find out the outcome?
She could do that. There's a cat event number that's generated for every call for service.
Okay.
And so I'm able to pull that up in the system, even if it didn't generate a case number, everything is recorded if it goes through our dispatch center. So if I were to, for example, stop and talk to somebody on the street in front of City Hall, and I tell my dispatch I'm talking to somebody on the street, that has a event number attached to it.
Okay.
So if, if she would like to reach out to me, I'd be happy to fill her in on what happened.
Thank you. She just caught me as I was coming to the meeting tonight, I said, okay, I'd ask, thank you.
Other questions for Sergeant Speltrich? Counselor Clark?
So the question we ask every month, has there been any changes in our unhoused population?
To my knowledge, no. We do have one particular person in the last couple days that has been arrested and is likely going to remain in the jail for a while that is part of the unhoused population. It was an incident that occurred outside of Crestwell, I don't really know much about it, I just noticed that he was in the jail. Other than that, one of our longtime unhoused people has told me that they are working on a place to put their RV permanently, and actually has a lead on that, so I'm crossing my fingers for him. But other than that, we don't have any influx coming in and nothing really going out either, it's that same, you know, five to six that are generally here.
Counselor Castillo.
Excuse me, just a quick question on the speeding citations. So you have seven calls and a goose egg for cases. Will that eventually reflect over here on the little, the box, the graph next to it, where you have the property, persons, and so forth?
So the speed citations don't generate case numbers, they're just cat event numbers, and we track those in a different way using the citations themselves. So that is only for the speed citations, it's not all citations. They don't generate the case number, so it's not going to be included over here on the right unless you want me to add a column there.
I guess what I would want to know is how many actual speeding citations have been written?
That, that number is the ones that were actually written. That does not include warnings.
So it's zero?
No, the calls are the.
Calls are actual citations?
Yes.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions? Counselor Osborne?
I noticed that this year, the incidents are a lot, amount is 225, well, the same time last year is 184. What in particular would you say, if there's any one particular item that raised that? Is it kind of across the board?
Well, when I did, when I put these numbers together, like I was saying earlier, there are a couple people that have generated a lot of calls for service for us. There's two people in particular that come to my mind that generate at least two calls a day each, and some of those calls are just calling them on the phone and talking to them for a couple minutes, some of them are taken as information, because it's not a criminal matter, but it still reflects as a call for service.
Counselor Shuck?
I wanted to thank you for your attention to the speeding on F Street. Manager Amber noted that in her Monday morning report to council, and I wish the young lady that had brought that to our attention was here tonight, but thank you very much for moving the, the sign and paying attention there.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good, thank you very much.
I was going to say I have one more thing to add, because nobody asked me. The Measure 11 was a vehicle fire.
They what?
It was a vehicle fire, the Measure 11, and they were arrested for it.
Not a murder.
Not a murder.
Arson, is that what you're calling it?
Arson, yep, arson and the second degree.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you. Manager Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. The next is the city attorney report. You happy to answer any questions you might have on that? Okay, the next is the code enforcement report, and Chelsea is really stepping up her report, so hopefully it's providing you with good information on the kinds of code enforcement issues she's working on. And I believe that she will, we're going to have that as a topic at this month's work session as well.
Counselor Shuck?
I did email her today and thanked her for the information on the barking dogs and just her active approach to follow-up. We've not had that in the past, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'm sure she appreciates your, your kind words. Okay, the next item is the building permit report. We are expecting to see a slowdown in building permits as we begin the moratorium that we have on the agenda for tonight, but you can see where we are at, at this point. There's no questions, that concludes the administrative reports.
Thank you, Manager Amber. We proceed to the backside of the agenda, to the council action items. And the first item is the Santa Pac rate increase. So we will begin tonight with a public hearing, and then, I believe, then we'll have a report from Manager Amber, is that correct, or from Jim Piper?
I can do the report.
Okay. So this is, this is a public hearing on item 6A, which is the Santa Pac rate increase, and the council wishes to hear any comments or concerns from anyone in the audience about this item. So if you wish to speak, you may please fill out a speaker's form, turn it in to Grace, and we will open the public hearing now, keep it open for one minute, but if you wish to speak, bring that form up and we'll give you an opportunity to speak to it. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. Manager Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have in your packet tonight is actually a resolution establishing new rates for next fiscal year and adopting the First Amendment to the Crestwell Exclusive Franchise Agreement. That amendment caps the rate increases for the next two years at 5%. After that, it requires that Santa Pac come before you if the rate is going to be over 5% ongoing. So this year, it's an increase of $1.90 for the most common residential service at 5%.
So, excuse me, I think that $1.90 was based on the 8%, and at the bottom of your court it says $1.20.
I'm sorry, you're correct.
Based on 5%.
You're correct.
Okay. Anything further, Manager Amber?
No. I see that there's representatives from Santa Pac in the audience, and if you have questions directly for them.
Okay. So let's start with any questions for Mr. Donnelly, who is back there in the back. Hello, Aaron. Any questions from, for Mr. Donnelly before we proceed to council discussion? Okay, counsel, the floor is open for discussion and a motion on this item. Counselor Holt.
Just to refresh my memory, this is, we're changing it and entering into a contract now, right?
We've always had a contract.
What, we're entering into a newly designed contract, correct?
No, we're entering into amendment to the contract, and the amendment only determines how rates are set. The rest of the contract remains in place.
Remains the same.
Mm-hmm.
Counsel, is there a motion on the floor? Counselor Clark?
I move that the city council approve Resolution 2023-06, authorizing Santa Pac to increase rates by 5% and approve the First Amendment to the Crestwell Exclusive Franchise Agreement.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Counselor Osborne seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Counsel will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Please, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those in favor. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Motion passes with Counselors Castillo and Holt in opposition. Now we move on to item B, which is the liquor license application and a report from Grace McNeil.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. This item, I'll take just a second here. The City of Crestwell received a new liquor license application from Todd Russell, owner of Cascade Home Center. Cascade Home Center is located at 110 South Main Street. Mr. Russell has applied for an off-premises license to sell liquor, beer, and wine in Crestwell. An off-premise license will allow the following. He may sell factory-sealed containers of malt beverages, wine, and cider at retail to individuals in Oregon for consumption off the licensed premises. A factory-sealed container of malt beverages may not hold more than 2 1/4 gallons. He may sell malt beverages, wine, and cider to individuals in a securely-covered container, growler, for consumption off the licensed premises. The container may not hold more than two gallons. He's eligible to apply to get pre-approval to provide sample tastings of malt beverages, wine, and cider for consumption on the premises. And the license comes with the privilege to deliver malt, malt beverages, wine, and cider directly to an Oregon resident. Sergeant Speldridge was asked to complete a background check on the applicant, and attached you will find his recommendation for approval of the application. According to state statute, all new liquor license applications must, must be approved by the locally, local governing body prior to issuance by the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. There are no financial considerations for this item. Staff recommends approval of the liquor license application for Cascade Home Center as a result of Sergeant Speldridge's recommendation on the background check. The council can choose to approve or deny the application.
Thank you, Grace. Thank you, Grace. All right, counsel, the floor is open for discussion on liquor license application. Counselor Holt.
I think I have an obvious question. Why on earth the Cascade Home Center would want a liquor license? But I'm more curious, I mean, to that point, how they intend to use it. I'm not sure I understand that piece.
It will just be for sales of sealed alcohol beverages.
Oh, in the store?
In the store to take out, not to be consumed on premises.
Okay.
Counselor Castillo.
Yeah, I just have a question on the, obviously, I'm not a consumer of beverage, malt beverages, but why does it say factory-sealed container may not hold more than 2 1/4 gallons, but then underneath may sell malt beverages, wine, and cider to individuals in a security-covered, but not hold more than two gallons? Why is there that extra quarter gallon?
I might address that.
Manager Amber?
My guess is that the factory sealed would be kegs. So this prevents them from sealing at the front, selling a keg of beer, whereas the other two gallons would be a growler, which is filled and the top is screwed on, but I don't believe it's factory sealed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional counsel discussion? Then I'm entertaining a motion on the new liquor license application. Counselor Clark?
I move that the city council approve the liquor license application for Cascade Home Center as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Counselor Holt seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Counsel will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes with Counselor Shuck in opposition. We move to item 6C, the annual Lane County Sheriff's Office contract renewal for services. Manager Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that we renew each year as we have a contract with the Lane County Sheriff's Office to provide deputies to the City of Crestwell for policing services.
All right, counsel, any questions for Manager Amber? Floor is open for council discussion or motion. Counselor Castillo.
I move that the city council authorize the city manager to execute renewal contract for the fiscal year July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, as presented.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Counselor Smith seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Counsel will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
I'm sorry, who seconded that? Thank you.
All right, we're gonna take just a breather, not a recess, so you can juggle your items around, counselors, and we're going to go to item L, ordinance number 557, an ordinance amending Crestwell municipal code relating to camping. Okay, I did receive a speaker request form, but we are already passed the public forum tonight, public, or passed the public forum, and there is no public hearing on this item until last month. So I won't be able to honor your request to speak tonight. All right, counsel, we are on ordinance number 557, so we're gonna begin with a report from City Manager Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, this has been a very contentious issue, and there are a lot of opinions surrounding it. And I just want to take a moment and thank you all for the hard work that you've done so far. This is not an easy topic, and it's not something that you chose. It's something that's been put on your shoulders, and you have to respond to it in order to keep us out of a lawsuit. So I do appreciate the hard work that you're doing. To repeat, the city council needs to address the court mandate on resting within our city. Our city attorney has given you advice regarding what that means and how that ordinance might look. City council addressed, told staff to create three separate ordinances, well, two separate ordinances for tonight, but the first ordinance had a motion on it. So we had to include it in this packet so that that motion could be addressed by the city council prior to the other two that were drafted for tonight's meeting. So you have one ordinance that you hope, that has been seen before, and that is the one that created a great deal of concern regarding Garden Lake Park. There is a motion on the floor that has been seconded to take the language of Garden Lake Park out of that ordinance, and I recommend you take that action, you take those actions first regarding that ordinance. Then if that ordinance does not pass, you have two other ordinances to consider, and of course, you may take action to adopt or not adopt those ordinances. Our city council, or our city attorney is here tonight to answer any additional questions you might have or to hear any direction you may give. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Amber. So we begin with where we left off a month ago, and that was with the version one, we're calling it. We have version one, two, and three for us. And we ended with a motion to amend ordinance 557, and the motion was made as following from Counselor Smith. Notwithstanding the above, this was a motion to remove the language from ordinance 557, to remove the language as follows. Notwithstanding the above, Garden Lake Park is not subject to closure hours set in this subsection unless otherwise posted. Now, that was not a motion to adopt the ordinance, but to amend the ordinance in that one instance. So we begin by taking up the motion and the second from last month. Does that make sense? Counselor Holt.
To be clear, we're just taking, we're just starting where we left off, right?
We're starting where we left off.
So the motion is on the table, and the motion to amend is on the table.
The motion was to amend the ordinance. It was not a motion...
But there was an original motion to pass the, so are both motions on the table?
No.
To get to the amendment, okay.
You can amend an ordinance prior to having a motion to pass it.
Thank you.
And in fact, that's typically what councils that I've worked for in the past have done, is they amend it, and then they take a motion to pass it as amended.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So the motion was to amend this section of the ordinance, and whether that is passed or not does not mean we have adopted the ordinance. We have simply amended the ordinance. Okay? So that's where we begin. So we have a motion on the floor and a second to amend ordinance 557, specifically Section 2. So let me read what Section 2 said originally. Section 2. Section 2 read as follows. Hours. Park hours are dawn to dusk for adults and supervised minors unless otherwise posted. Unaccompanied minors are permitted between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. May 1st through September 30th, and the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. October 1st through April 30th. Notwithstanding the above, Garden Lake Park is not subject to closure hours set out in this subsection unless otherwise posted. The motion was to remove the language. Notwithstanding the above, Garden Lake Park is not subject to closure hours set in this subsection unless otherwise posted. To strike that sentence. And that was seconded. So the floor is open for council discussion of the motion. Counselor Clark?
Sure, I think I was originally opposed to this amendment, just because we had not yet gotten as far as I think we have now in, in terms of our understanding or the potential of placement of, kind of the hours of the, we've had more discussion in the last month. And so while I was originally opposed to that, because I felt like that put us in concern, or I guess in jeopardy of, of that lawsuit that we've been talking about, or that potential lawsuit, I think at this point in time, given that we have, I think we've really talked a lot about Garden Lake Park not being the place that we would like to have this, I think I'm, I'm now in favor of that amendment.
Right. Other counsel discussion? If not, then we will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion is amended as, as was raised. Now we take up the matter of three ordinances. Version one, version two, and version three. Version one was the original ordinance that we have been discussing. Version two and version three were created by the council at the last work session. I believe the primary difference was in... Well, I don't know if I need to say the primary difference. You all know, right? Primary difference.
I did my homework.
Okay, Manager Amber.
Our city attorney can talk to what the differences are between the two if you would like, because he did take into consideration some of the feedback regarding the Roseburg ordinance when he was writing one of the versions, I believe.
Let's do that. Let's ask our city attorney, Ross Williamson, to come and address this about version two and version three.
Good evening. So the, the only difference between version two and version three is the wording in terms of place regulations. So version two, allergies, okay. Version two says camping is prohibited on all city property except for the designated area within the South First Street Pocket Park. And so that essentially designates a, a portion of the Pocket Park as determined by our city manager, where sleeping would be allowed during those hours authorized. And option three, ordinance number three, option three, simply says camping is prohibited on all city property. So those are the two options that I was, I understood to bring back to you. One was an option that allows sleeping overnight in that Pocket Park, and one was a version that allowed overnight sleeping anywhere in the city. And I, I changed the structure to mimic, it seemed like, folks seemed to like that Roseburg, the layout of the Roseburg ordinance, and so I used that as a model. And so now we have, and that's how we discussed it at the last meeting, too. We talked about time, place, and manner, and so I have sections talking about time, place, and manner.
Okay, questions you might have for... Okay, questions you might have for Attorney Williamson? Okay. Counselor Smith.
Is there a law or rule that would guide me in the direction of camping?
Counselor Smith, make sure your microphone is.
Sorry about that. I have concerns on the word camping. Can we adjust that to follow suit just with some of the ordinances that have been put in and what the law states of more of a sleep late, rest?
So in the, and you're talking about the definition sections.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you certainly can make any changes to the proposal that you want. And I think these are largely. The definitions that I have here are largely based on the Roseburg model, but also the other models that I've seen across the state. And I think it's intended to be pretty broad and inclusive because that gives our enforcement officers the authority to say, oh, I know that's camping because you're doing one of these broad things.
Do you see any legal action, though, if we added sleep late, rest, B., or changed it to a sleep late, rest, B. rather than camping? Do you see there being any? I don't want you to like flat out say it, but do you see there being an issue?
I see it as potentially overly broad, potentially, because that include anyone sitting down or maybe leaning up against the side of a building because it's hot outside, and they're taking a five-minute break. I don't know, you know, what's the dividing line between that and what we're actually trying to regulate? So it could be overly broad and potentially vague.
Isn't that why they're kind of trying to define it though? Sleep late, rest? I mean, that's what I keep reading in some of the updated versions, that they're kind of getting away from the camping word and focusing more on that. And I thought that would, I think that's a better situation for us as well.
Mayor Amber.
Just something to keep in mind. People on the Fourth of July like to bring blankets and lay down on the grass and close their eyes during the ceremonies and things that go on. And I don't think you want to limit that enjoyment of the park on that occasion.
I don't think that, I don't think that's.
Counselor, Counselor Smith has the floor.
I don't think that's what we're doing. I'm really focused on the camping and the situation of the homeless. And so I think the deputies will have the discretion to decide that.
All right, additional questions from the council? Counselor Holt.
I, the place, camping on the final draft, camping is prohibited on all city property. I think that when we were discussing not wanting to designate a spot, I'm not sure that that meant prohibiting it on paper either. I think that we just sort of wanted to leave it out, or am I mistaken?
That was my original intent, yes.
Yep. And so I would make a motion that in both versions, or in, I guess, version 3, we strike that line altogether in section C, number 2.
Section C or in section 1, C?
Sorry. Section, oh, you're right. Section 1. C 2.
So that, so go ahead and read what your motion is.
My motion is to strike the language in section 1 under C 2.
Which reads?
Camping is prohibited on all city property. I mean camping is, yeah, camping is prohibited on all city property.
So strike place and leave it blank?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I'm just asking for clarification. Okay, there's a motion on the floor that on version 3, under 2 place, the phrase camping is prohibited on all city property, that that language would be struck. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Council discussion of the motion. Oh, excuse me, Counselor Holt.
Hi, I just, hi. I'm making this recommendation because I've been hearing a lot from people, they're worried that they're getting sued, right? So if we, if we have a line that says we prohibit it, that might open that door a little more than if we just leave it alone.
Excuse me, I have to ask, and I have any kind of responses from the public that point that this is council decision-making time? Okay, additional further council comments, discussion? Counselor Clark.
And this may be a, my discussion may be a question for our city attorney. But my understanding is if that is removed, then that actually opens the door much wider for a potential lawsuit. And so I guess I'm hoping that our city attorney can weigh in on that.
Ross?
Well, I'd have to figure out what the, what that results in. So I think if we strike that language, we no longer have a place where camping is prohibited. So I think, I think it allows camping on city property. Because there's, well, we'd be less with the parks. So the parks would still be closed, right? So it would be all, non-park property would be open for camping.
Russ, does it address the zoning of where the property is? Is there, is there a zone? I can't remember. We discussed that.
For RV, so that, the vehicle camping is separate. So this is the city property, so like sidewalks, city properties, parks, things like that.
So city properties and residential areas, such as sidewalks and such, could have campers on them?
As long as they're not blocking, blocking pedestrian traffic or vehicle traffic, which are regulated elsewhere. I think if we remove the prohibition of camping, what we're left with is our current prohibitions, which is our parks are closed overnight. And so we would be left with non-park property being open overnight. I believe that would be the result.
So I believe that one of the rules that we have is to try to encourage all councilors to have an opportunity to speak. So I want to ask, Counselor Shuck, I believe you have your hand up. Okay?
I, I agree with you. Ross, I think if we say, if we take that out, then we've got time and we've got manner. And what our ordinance would read is we have time and manner for all public property, you know, all city-owned property that doesn't have closed hours. So the Little Dog Park up first, the Pump Skate Park thingamajig, I can't remember what it's called. The Bicycle Park down here. Wayfair, what do you call that?
Bicycle Wayside is a park.
Wayside?
It is a park and would be closed.
It is a park, but it does not have posted hours.
Well, it should.
Yeah. So we open, if we, if we do, if we take out that, my opinion is then it's like, well, you've got time and manner for everything that isn't posted and closed. That's my opinion.
I want to see another councillor who would wish to speak to this. So Counselor Clark.
Sure, I was going to say, I think the other piece of this potential amendment is that this makes it more difficult for our sheriff, sheriffs, who are trying to enforce what is, you know, what is happening in the moment, mostly because there's not clear direction for them to say this, this space is okay or this space is not okay. And so I think by having a space articulated, I think that this makes it easier for our sheriff to meet the objectives that we are, what we've been talking about.
Other councillors? So I'm going to take, Counselor Osborne.
So the second option, not giving, not listing the place means that they could basically camp, stay anywhere that's not already posted, that you can't stay there? If it's not a park, it's, any place, any city property that's not posted as, is that, is that incorrect?
No, that's how I'm reading, this particular, I mean, so we're looking just at one line of the proposal.
Right.
So if we strike that one line, I think that's what we would be left with in our, and if this was then adopted, we would have park regulations and another portion of the code that say parks are closed overnight. And I don't believe we have another regulation on the books that says other city properties are closed overnight. And so we would be, those would allow camping.
Would our closures for public water and wastewater still be viable?
We don't have to open our gates. I mean, so, yeah, I mean, City Hall can lock its doors. Public Works can close the gate.
Okay.
So I'll speak for a minute. I really, I really liked the Roseburg model that was presented, which I believe we followed here with the one line on page. Page. Right, there it is. Page 2, camping on public property involuntarily. This was C. Involuntary, involuntary homeless individuals are not prohibited from sleeping and resting on city property provided such actions comply with all the following time, place, and manner regulations. And what I've noticed in the Roseburg ordinance was when it got to the place, then they outlined very specifically where it couldn't happen. And I like that model. I'd be very concerned with a model that had nothing there that I think could just open, open it up to all kinds of situations that we don't want to have. So I still really prefer the Roseburg model that was presented. All right, Counselor Holt.
This was a follow-up question for Ross. And so if we were to leave that, it would not be, is it not illegal the way it stated?
Yeah, so this, I think this is where we get to the last work session, where in my opinion, if, if we prohibit sleeping overnight on all city property, then that's in violation, I think that's not objectively reasonable. And so I think we would be in violation of 195, 530. So I.
So, so, yeah, so I roll back to what I was saying then, that, that we shouldn't be putting this line in here. And by designating a spot, which is in our version 2, we're just inviting that to overflow very quickly and needing another. And so that's, that's my intent. Okay, but I just wanted to make sure.
Counselor Shuck.
This has been tough. It's been months and months and months. I dug my heels in at the last work session because the constituents overwhelmingly have told me, none, we don't want it anywhere. But I'm very happy if version 2 does pass tonight, that we have gone with the 10:00 p.m. to 7:30 a.m. And I just wanted to put that in comment, that I would not be happy to vote on it because it's not what I've heard from constituents. But if it does pass, at least we've got that. So we will not have children, you know, still in daylight hours, walking by the people that are violating the rules that are, that are there. The 10, the 10:00 p.m. to 7:30 a.m., at least in my opinion, we were regulating it to truly, you need somewhere to sleep and not, in my personal opinion, somewhere to live.
I think there was another councillor that had their hand raised a minute ago. Counselor Castillo.
I do, Mayor, but I have a motion to make, but there's one on the floor already. So we'll, I'll go after we finish up with this motion.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
We have a motion on the floor, yes, and a second. Strike.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was an actual motion.
Yes. So the comment I want to make is, I appreciate all the work that Ross and Michelle did on both of these, version 2 and version 3. After reading the Roseburg ordinance, thank you, Counselor Smith, for recommending that we all take a look at that. It got my wheels going quite a bit. Then I had the opportunity last Thursday evening to attend the Lane County Mayor's roundtable. And the item that I put on the agenda was I wanted to hear from all the other mayors what they were doing. And, and I was encouraged to find out. All the other cities are struggling with this. And they're all spending a lot of money on legal fees just to try to figure it out, as we are also doing. So, but I took some notes on that. And I came to the conclusion that there was another way to go, which would require some amendments, which I also have prepared, to either version, version 2 or version 3, amendments that I, that I really think, for me, would take the ordinance in a much better fashion than either version 2 or version 3 as is. So I'm not interested in adopting either version as is, but making some serious amendments or for council discussion, directing our administrator, Ross, to create another draft and bring it back in two weeks at our work session, but call for a special meeting and look at that and get her done. So just my general comments. Any further discussion on the motion that is on the floor? All right. Grace, would you read the motion again that's on the floor?
Counselor Holt made a motion to strike section 1, C, number 2, place. Striking the language camping is prohibited on all city property. And Counselor Smith seconded.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion is defeated with Councillors Clark, Shuck, Mayor Stram, Counsel President Castillo, and Counselor Osborne in opposition. So I want to begin, we take up ordinances 2 and 3 for council discussion. Counselor Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor, yes. And thank you, Counselor Nick, yes, for bringing this to our attention. And as I've been paying attention to what other cities as well have been doing, and considering all public comment, I would make a motion to reject version 1 and 2 and give us an opportunity to amend version 3 to perhaps maybe mirror Roseburg's ordinance a little closer.
So restate your motion.
My motion is to reject version 1 and 2.
I'll second that.
Here we have a motion on the floor to reject version 1 and 2. Motion from Counselor Castillo and a second from Counselor Holt. Floor is open for council discussion. Counselor Shuck.
I would have to know how you intend to amend version 2.
Version 3.
3, pardon me.
That's up to all of us. I've already heard there, there are several items that we, I'm starting with language that Roseburg uses. They define campsite, involuntary homeless, personal property.
We do as well.
Not campsite, involuntary homeless, or personal property.
Yes, we do.
In the beginning of it. And I'll too, also like how they call out areas where you cannot camp. And under manner, there, the, a camp underneath our section where it talks about eight foot, we have eight foot by eight foot, the intent of this section is to allow a person to sleep protected from the elements and maintain the essentials for living, while still allowing the use of public spaces as designed and intended, I think that's pretty good, pretty good item to add, they also had included open flames, recreational fires, burning of garbage, and so forth.
We have to-
Excuse me, just one councillor at a time, then we'll return, councillor Shuck, and you will continue with the floor.
I'm not under place, it's not under place in our version three, and then we also had, which I didn't see, and perhaps I missed it, we were going to include it nowhere near the schools, or it, we didn't, we didn't, we don't have that, in, in or adjacent to any residential zoned area, we don't have that, we're not, we don't have mention of residentially zoned, or any properties legally residentially used regardless of zoning, and anywhere within 200 feet of a school or daycare facility, I think we were talking about 1,000 feet, but Roseburg uses 200 feet, so, so there's room to work with there, so, and anyone else, and animals, all animals must be leashed or created at all times, all noises ordinance must be abided by all times, we don't have that included, so, perhaps there are some other amendments that could be made.
All right, councillor Shuck, you continue to have the floor.
Is your intention councillor president, to take the pocket park off the table for consideration, that's the, that's the elephant in the room.
Version three doesn't have that.
Correct, version three has no place.
That's right.
That's what you-
My motion is to strike one and two, and we're looking at version three, which does not include that.
But in your, but you have not told us yet your amendments, you just wanted to look like-
I just did, I just did.
That's your amendments in totality. We do have the, the fire, we do have the animal, so, I mean, unless we want to, like, read it, it's seven pages and it's in there.
Not in that, not in that-
I'll call the question.
Excuse me, no, I'm going to continue with the floor, councillor Shuck has the floor, so raise whatever other questions you have, if you have some specifically for councillor Castillo, make those, and then councillor Castillo will respond.
It's, it's under F, number, number nine is animals must not be left unattended, animals must be controlled on leash no longer than 15 feet or created, it has those items, so I'm just trying to understand what you would be amending it to, and, and I don't have a copy of Roseburg, so citing Roseburg doesn't really mean anything to me, because I don't have a copy of Roseburg, but we've got, number two is no creation or maintenance of open flames, recreational fires, burning of garbage, or bonfires in or around vehicles, and recreational vehicles, so, I personally am very happy with version three, I don't know what it would need to be amended to, unless you wanted to name a different place, it's got the dogs, they got to be in compliance with state rabies vaccination, no open alcohol, no nudity, no sexual conduct, noise regulations, I mean, it's got six pages.
Well, it just doesn't, it would, I think it would add strength, there's no mention of them being on a leash.
Yes, there is.
Says unattended.
I just read it to you, a leash of no more than 15 feet.
Where are you seeing that?
F, number nine, on page six, animals must be controlled on leash no longer than 15 feet or created.
Okay, okay, well, I stand corrected.
All of those items are on page six. And then Ross added the nudity and sexual conduct based on our last work session, he kept in there minors to be accompanied by parent or guardian, I mean, I'm really personally happy with version three.
You're certainly entitled to amend this one.
Excuse me, councillor Castillo, councillor Shuck, okay, councillor Shuck is included, councillor Castillo, and he gave you the floor.
My motion still stands, version two, strike versions one and two.
All right, councillor Holt.
I just wanted to point out that, once we get through this motion, we could discuss amending the other version if, if it in fact stays on the table, but I, I do agree that the animal stuff is in here, but I think that we do need to shore that up a little bit, because it doesn't require people to stay with their animal.
It does say-
Does it?
Excuse me, just one councillor at a time, councillor Holt has the floor.
It just says must not be left unattended, that doesn't mean-
Up on page four, animals shall not be left unattended, aggressive or harassing animals are prohibited. So, that's in the manner.
Okay, thank you.
All right, councillor Smith.
I've got a quick one, I think Holt will clear it up, but a gentleman in the back, police officer Eugene, was at the last meeting, and he made a very good point, that he deals with every day, and it's Holt who fixes everything, he mentioned, I believe, that the leash, if the dog is running with a leash on it, it has a leash, so I have a motion that was going to add to that, of that the animal either be created or leashed to the owner or an unmovable object, that would hopefully, you know, take his advice, who's that with every day, that would hopefully kind of clear this up, where I would just add that to the language of, of number three.
All right, any further discussion councillors? Councillor Clark.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm supportive of moving away from version one, I'm, I'm not yet convinced that we should move away from version two, as something to be, as something to consider, and I'm hoping that we can have more discussion around version two before, and if we, if we decide to move away from it, one of the things that I really liked about version two, is that, as I think about, you know, that, the piece about objectively reasonable time, place, and manner, is, I've really been thinking a lot about what is our unhoused population, and how many, how many individuals do, do we have, and how many individuals have we had for the last, however long we've been asking that question, which has been several years, and the number really sits around not more than 10 individuals, and so, as I think about version two, and as I think about the feedback that we've received from the community and the conversation that we had at our last work session, I think that version two is something that meets that objectively reasonable time, place, and manner, and provides space where we, we believe that we have to, to host our unhoused population, so, so for that reason, I'm not ready to discard version two yet.
Councillor Osborne, you have not spoken, do you have some input?
I'm not ready to get rid of version two either, I think we might need to designate a, a spot they can camp, otherwise we're leaving it open that they can decide to camp anywhere, or it can't be very easily regulated if they are.
So I'm going to jump in, attending the mayor's roundtable was very interesting, because as, there were seven mayors there, present, they spoke about their ordinances, and I scribbled, scratched notes as fast as I could, and here's, here's just some of the snippets I got, Coburg has a small number of unhoused people, does not have a non-camping ordinance, prohibits overnight sleeping in parks, does have an open space, not a park where people can sleep overnight, does not designate a place in the ordinance, but the mayor said it is, quote, designated internally, and I asked, what does that mean, she said, the mayor, the staff, Public Works, and the police officers all know where the space is, it's just not listed and written down anywhere. Junction City currently has zero unhoused people, prohibits overnight sleeping in all parks, police direct the unhoused to a, an undeveloped piece of city-owned property. Veneta has 28 unhoused people, has a committee that has been addressing the needs of the unhoused for many years, this committee has been meeting for a long time, there is a designated area owned by the city that has porta-potties, sanitation services, and will soon have showers, they have a volunteer who does laundry every week, the unhoused folks bring their laundry, the volunteer picks it up, takes it off-site, does the laundry, and then returns the laundry. Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge said, we have lots of public space that is available for overnight sleeping, however, our ordinance clearly designates where you cannot sleep overnight, we have taken the Roseburg approach. Eugene has 3,500 to 4,000 unhoused people, has safe sleep sites where camping is allowed, prohibits sleeping overnight in public parks, does not prohibit sleeping overnight on city property, clearly designates where you cannot sleep overnight, makes a distinction between camping and sleeping, and she said, quote, our police and public safety do not have a place where they direct people to go. Then I noted from Eugene, from the Register Guard, yesterday's edition, the quote near the end, it said, city councillors voted to strike the city's all-out camping ban, and replaced it with detailed, location-specific bans, so, at the last meeting, I was a strong advocate that we needed a place designated and named, but I've rethought that position. My takeaways from listening to the other mayors in Lane County was this, the Lane County cities are not designated places, are not designating places and naming them in the ordinances, they are distinguishing between camping and sleeping, although I noted in the Roseburg ordinance that at the beginning, councillor Smith, while it, while it designates, while it differentiates, talked about sleeping, then throughout the article, they returned to the phrase camping throughout, and I think part of it goes back to what our attorney said, was the very broad definition of what camping is, that then gives some direction to staff and to police as to what they're enforcing. The Lane County cities are not prohibiting overnight sleeping on public property, but what they are doing in the ordinances is carefully describing where overnight sleeping is not allowed, and they are not allowing overnight sleeping in parks, so I came to the conclusion that ordinance, version two, which names a place, is not in the best interest of the cities, but ordinance three, which says no place, is not in the best interest of the city either, and my conclusion was, we need different ordinance, and, and so I actually have prepared my own amendments, as I think councillor Castillo has, and councillor Smith has, and I'm guessing that all of us have been thinking about this and have more tweaking to do, so that's my thoughts, is there any further discussion of the motion on the floor before we vote? Councillor Holt.
I do, I just want to drive home that, that there's nothing that says that we have to designate a spot, we've been saying this for a while, I know some of us have, but also, I think it would be inhumane of us to designate a spot in Crestwell, because we don't have the services here to provide them, and all we're doing is enabling them to continue their bad habits, or whatever got them there in the first place, right, we don't have services for anything they might need, whether that's finding a job, helping them find a job, getting treatment for drug addiction, whatever their problem is, we can't help them here, so I think it's more inhumane to designate a place in Crestwell, thank you.
Any further council discussion? All right, we will proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion to strike version one and two, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion does not pass with councillors Clark, Shuck, Mayor Stram, and councillor Osborne in opposition, so with that, I move that we strike versions one, two, and three, and give directions tonight to our city manager and our attorney on amendments, changes to make to the ordinance. Is there a second on the motion? Councillor Osborne seconds the motion, floor is open for council discussion. Councillor Shuck.
I'm going to vote no on that, I don't want to be here till 1:00 a.m., I think we move it to a work session would be in our best interest.
Councillor Holt.
I actually was going to say similar, I think that it would be more appropriate to make those edits in our next work session.
Councillor Osborne.
I agree, we should move it to the work session to finalize the next version, hopefully the final version, work session.
Is there any way we can just make the amendments that each of us have, add it to number three?
Yes.
And not go back and pay the lawyer a lot of fees, I mean, I don't think we're that far off, I mean, I have some things I'd add to the animals, I would love to strike park information, if they want to find it, they can figure it out on their own, it's not our responsibility, it doesn't need a spot in order to tell them exactly where it is, so I don't know, I could just make a couple amendments, and, you know, my thought.
Manager Amber.
Just for your consideration, the deadline for approval is coming up pretty fast, if you wait until the work session to work through a new version, you're going to have to have two special meetings before the end of the year to adopt it, if you work on it tonight, and you adopt the, adopt it, you go through the first adoption, if it's not unanimous, then we can have a special session on the night of the work session, and pass it, and you don't have to have any special meetings, other than the special meeting before, a regular meeting of the city council, so, you just might want to think about your workload and the proposal that is before you.
Councillor Castillo.
Yes, I just would agree with what councillor Nick just said, and that, back to my, my motion was to get rid of one and two, and I think we're very, very close to getting to where we want to be, and we could amend version three, and be done with it tonight.
Okay.
I'm going to allow the councillors to speak. Councillor Clark.
Yes, I was just going to share thoughts similar to what manager Amber just shared, is that July 1 is coming soon, and I just want to be mindful of, mindful of our, of our time, and, and that whatever, if there is anything that is passed, it is still able to be amended, or we can still come back and amend it, so that we can find those, those kind of those fine tunes, and really have, have an opportunity to, to really think through what those amendments might be, one of the things I really appreciate about having the, a copy of the, of the ordinances to consider beforehand, is that it really allows me to think about them in totality, and, and so, so it's, I mean, I think it's helpful for me, and I think it's helpful for all of us to be able to think about all of those potential amendments that we might, we might do, and so, I'm nervous that if we move it to the work session, that there's, that we're, we're getting right up to that deadline, and, and I think what we've heard is that we're worried about a lawsuit, and so if we, if we push it right up to that deadline, then I just worry that we're, we're going to miss the deadline.
Councillor Castillo.
Correct me if I'm wrong, attorney Ross, did you not say in the work session that as long as we were working on it, that come July 1, if we did not have something passed, we would be okay?
Yes, but a little bit like reading tea leaves, but in, in my opinion, I have not heard of people coming after Crestwell, I have not heard of any attorneys lining up to sue the city of Crestwell, I think we are making a valiant effort to come into compliance, we obviously have been meeting since February to do so, and I think if we continue to keep this on the agenda, and make progress, I think we are meeting our obligations, even though we are potentially missing the timeline, yeah, so that, that is what I've- Yeah, so that, that is what I've said before.
Thank you, Attorney Ross. So the amendments that I have are one page. There are not that many, and I picked them all out, and you're welcome, I've made copies for all of you, if we get to that point. I believe it can happen fairly quickly. I think the other amendments can be added. Scribble scratch on the back, or if you prepared your own on paper. I came prepared tonight for a long meeting, and we still have a lot to go. And I think that we can make these amendments tonight, give direction, have two weeks, then we will call a special meeting in two weeks that would follow immediately our work session. And I'm optimistic that either we could create these amendments, vote on the ordinance, and pass it tonight unanimously, that's one option, or we can make these amendments, vote on it, not pass it unanimously tonight, bring back the work session in two weeks, and be done with it. So I'm of the mind that we can create these amendments tonight and move forward in a very timely manner. Counselor Holt.
I, I feel a little blindsided by the, the amendments that you have there. I feel like you came in here, you just said, you, you came in prepared for a long meeting. I don't think the rest of us knew this was coming. I really, really strongly believe that this needs to go back to work session. I think doing things hastily is not a good idea. I think that we need to take as much time as it takes to do it correctly, and passing something now with the thought that we can just change it later is totally irresponsible, in my opinion.
I will respond to that. I don't think this is hasty. I can't speak for the other five counselors, but I've had three weeks to mull it over. I've read, and there were probably five or six different ordinances from different cities, I've attended a meeting with mayors, I spent hours the last few days working on this, and I'm only guessing that all the other counselors came tonight, having done the same kind of thing, and thought through, how am I going to get this done? Do I let these ordinances exist, or do I want to amend them? And I know that, that amending a motion is very important, and in our, in our rules that we read, it says, "Amendments must be stated aloud, or, better yet, written down." So I took time today and I wrote, read through it all, and I wrote them down, and tried to be as succinct as I can. So for me, this is not at all hasty. This is something we've been working on for months, and the last three weeks since our last meeting, which was very, very difficult, I put a lot of thought into it, and I'm sure all of you have. Any further counsel discussion before we vote on the motion? Counselor Clark.
I was going to say, I'm also prepared for a long meeting, and I'm very comfortable with a long meeting. I think that this is the work that we do, and it would be helpful for me if I can have those amendments in writing so that I can see them, and so I'm appreciative of, of those amendments that you have written down, or if, or if anyone has those amendments written down. That, that's helpful for me, so that I can look at it in context with the rest of, of everything else that we're considering.
All right, counsel will proceed to vote. Grace, will you read the motion on the floor?
Mayor Stram motioned to strike versions one, two, and three, and make amendments to another, another ordinance, and Osborne seconded.
All right, counsel will proceed to vote.
Add clarification.
Clarification.
From you.
Yes.
What, it's to strike one, two, and three, and then make amendments to which one?
Was that in my motion to make amendments?
You did mention amendments.
Okay, to make amendments.
So.
So I didn't clarify to what.
Exactly.
Just that we were striking one, two, and three, and making amendments to the ordinance. So that's the motion. All right.
Amendments to what?
But we have three versions.
Which number?
That was not part of the motion.
Okay, that's fair, then we'll.
To strike them and to make amendments.
Yes, sir, so, yes, so if we strike one, two, and three, what is there left to amend?
Nothing, there's nothing on their table, then.
Wait, I thought you said to give direction to Attorney Ross to start over.
Yes, they're, they would be struck, but then we can pick up any three of them on paper and say, "This version, which is now struck, I wish to make these amendments and create a new ordinance." Manager Amber.
So what you're suggesting is to look at the three and take language out of the ones that you all agreed to, and come up with a fourth version, with amended language from the three in consideration.
Yes, well put. Counselor Castillo.
More clarification. So if we strike three, that allows us to pick up any one of the three and amend, but we have to decide by vote, which one are we going to pick up?
I think it's language from them, not an entirety of them. You're not going to use the structure of any of them. You're going to take a paragraph from this one, a paragraph from that one, add an amendment to this one, and you're going to rewrite a completely new version. It's going to be version four.
Okay, counsel will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion is defeated, with all six of you voting against. All right, the floor is now open once again for discussion. So I will just open with my proposed amendments, and we'll start with version three. We'll take version three as our worthy document.
Is this discussion, or are you making a motion?
I am, I am, I have the floor to make, to bring amendments. No motion at this point.
Are there any, are there motions on the table right now?
There are no motions on the.
Bring amendments, a motion.
Yeah, why are we having?
This is counsel discussion time.
So you're just discussing, you're not bringing in amendments?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing some amendments for discussion. Did you all get a copy? So Ross, this is a copy for you. So if you, if you'll pick up version three, my, my recommended amendment starts with page three. I think I was actually working on version two, excuse me. Version two. Version two, page.
Were discussion of this?
Yes. Version, well, first of all, I'm bringing my, I'm, I have the floor to bring my recommendation, my thoughts, then someone else will have the floor. So I have the floor, page number three, this is under place, it would be to strike A, which has to, with time, and replace it with this language, which comes from the Roseburg ordinance. Unless otherwise specified, any camping or camp or not prohibited may only occur between the following hours, between November 1 and February 28, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., during the month of March, and October, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., between April 1 and September 30, 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Under place, this is also page three, strike the paragraph in entirety, and replace it with this language. Camping is prohibited at all times, is prohibited at all times in the following locations, and/or adjacent to any residentially zoned area, or any properties legally residentially used regardless of zoning. Item two, anywhere within 1,000 feet of an educational facility. Item three, anywhere within 100 feet of a public library. Item four, excuse me, I didn't get the numbers there. Item four is any place where camping, a camp or camp materials create a physical impediment to emergency or non-emergency ingress, egress, or access to property, whether private or public, or on public sidewalks or other public rights of ways, including but not limited to driveways providing access to vehicles and entrances or exits from buildings and/or other real property. Item five, any vehicle lane or bicycle lane within any public right-of-way. Item six, immediately adjacent to any city-owned buildings, or anywhere on airport property, or anywhere on or adjacent to city-owned water or sewer treatment facilities, or water storage sites, or adjacent to the fire district building. And then the final item is the following city-owned parks. So these would be prohibited camping, Northsboro Street and Cobalt Lane, Pocket Park, South Second Street Park, Bicycle Wayside Park, Cobalt Activity Center, Garden Link Park, Grasslands Bicycle Pump Track, Hope Park. So you can see they're in one current park not listed. Item four, manner J, this is page four, under manner, and part of this is a question. It says, "All general park rules provided, except general park hours must be adhered to." So I'm, I'm a little bit uncertain about the language there. Could you clarify? Because I, I have suggested, so Ross or Michelle, could you clarify what that refers to, page four J?
So those are your existing park rules, and that's where, and rather than just, I was trying to save a little time and, and paper, and so we have your existing park rules, and that's where we have fires, we have the pets, we have the alcohol drugs, we have smoking, we have weapons, waste, public nuisance hazard, and we have all those existing park rules, and I was incorporating those into your camping rules, and so we don't have to have them in two different places in your code, we can just refer to them.
The question is, why didn't it say except general park hours?
Because we, after the last work session, we wanted stricter park rules for the Pocket Park, and so it was 10 o'clock at night to 7:30 in the morning, and so your existing park rules are more akin to dusk to dawn, and so those existing park rules would still apply to the other parks, but the Pocket Park would be the 10 o'clock, p.m. to 7:30 a.m.
So with a change in time that I have here, is there a need for it to stay the same, or should it be where it, "All general park rules provided must be adhered to," and strike those words? What would you recommend?
I, I think I should say the same, because you're proposing different times as well. You're, you have a new matrix of allowed times.
Okay. All right, counsel, so those are amendments that I had. Floor is now open. Counselor Castillo.
Just a question on the, on the park times. Now, we, in our park rules and regulations, we already have park hours. Could they just be, would that, would that not work, just to use the existing park hours that we have? Or maybe it's just this one park, the park of the Bicycle Pump Track. We have May 1st, May 1st through September 30th, at 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. October 1st, April 30th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Does that apply to all our parks, those hours, or is that just the Pump Track?
That's all of our parks.
Yes, that's your park, your general park rules.
So could we just not go with, with the existing hours that we have?
Well, yes, but the ordinance, while it, while it allows overnight sleeping, except where it's prohibited, and this gives the list of prohibitions, there will still be publicly-owned property in Crestwell not prohibited, because the city does own some other pieces of property that are not necessarily going to be prohibited in this list of prohibitions. So then, so then these hours would say, if you happen to be, if our deputy finds you on a piece of property that is not on the prohibited list, and you're sleeping, then these hours apply, because you're not in a park. But still, these hours apply, and so by such and such a time in the morning, you have to move.
That, that makes sense.
And so these times were taken directly out of the Roseburg one, which, which I like, because it kind of hits the different seasons of the year, so. Any further, Counselor Castillo?
No, no, thank you.
Counselor Shek?
I'm going to stand by what we decided on in the last work session, which was the 10:00 p.m. to 7:30, because of shift change and the needs for our Lane County Sheriff, and also children's activities. We discussed at length the Winter Lights Festival, the library activities, and that we did not want people pitching tents, leotards, blankets, things of that nature, when we had community events going on. So with all due respect, there is no way I will ever vote yes on these times. Thank you.
Counselor Holt.
I agree with Counselor Shek. We, we worked together as a group to come up with, with that time, and also, just a reminder that Pocket Park is right next to a park and ride, where people do, you know, ride the city bus, leave their cars and ride the city bus, so I just, I, I agree with her on that. I will say that I do like the, the place edits that you bring forward to us, I think they make sense.
Counselor Osborne.
I don't like the hours. I, I like the hours we talked about last meeting. 5:00 p.m. is too early, 8:00 a.m. is too late.
I won't beat a dead horse, I agree with the times. I would, you know, I like what you brought, honestly, I would, anywhere within 1,000 feet of an educational facility, I'd like to make that a lot more strict, and other than that, I'm, I'm fine to move forward and amend some of these. I like that you left off, which was my original effort the first time, was just to not designate a place and not say it. That was a month ago. Put that on the minute. No offense, no disrespect.
Counselor Clark.
I also concur with the, with the feedback about the time. I think that what I heard from the, from the last work session was that there was a, there was a desire to kind of meet the minimum, minimum requirements, to be, make sure that it was objectively reasonable for time, place, and manner, and so I, I felt like the conversation that we had around that 10:00 p.m. to 7:30 a.m., I thought that that, that fell in line with that. I also just want to just double-check, and so I guess I would confer with Manager Amber as well as Lane County Sheriff's Office. If we were to look at this, this proposal, are there still spaces that are, that people can be?
Yes, they are in residential areas, but yes. And of course, the Pocket Park across the street.
Okay, so the Pocket Park would still meet that, meet this?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent, okay, and is that something that is easily explained?
Mm-hmm.
I think so. I would have just one more question, if, if I can, if I still have the floor.
You have the floor.
Perfect, I was going to say, I also then just have a question for us, to the attorney, is that do these potential amendments, I guess moving away from that, that time piece, so I guess the, the piece around place, does that still meet the objectively reasonable standard?
Based upon what Michelle Amber just said, as long as there's a place where someone can sleep, then that, that's, then I believe that's objectively reasonable. I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, it says not in a residential area, so that's number one. So I'm, I'm not sure what this leaves left, so I, it, it's really hard for me to answer that question.
It, it leaves the Pocket Park across the street.
Okay.
Without saying it.
Counselor Clark. Counselor Shek.
I did want to point out in my experience as a real estate professional and a planning commissioner, there is no such thing as legally residentially used. It's only residential, or it's not. An appraiser can go to a commercial building where someone wants to live, and they can give an opinion of the best, highest and best use for that property, and they can say, oh, this is a commercial building, but the best use for this building is residential, but there's no such thing as legally residentially used. My opinion.
So I'm not an expert in either law or real estate. This is lifted directly out of Roseburg ordinance, out of language, but I am not an expert.
My opinion is, that's ridiculous. That's my personal opinion. I'm only stating my personal opinion.
Counselor Castillo.
Question from Manager Amber. I think you just mentioned that that would allow a couple of spots up residential area, which you think are just right up the street here?
Yeah, I misspoke. It does say it's prohibited in any residentially zoned area, as the attorney pointed out, and also Counselor Schuck.
So that would not those out?
Those would not be allowed.
Okay. Still leaves us the one location right over here. Okay. Thank you.
As I drove around Crestwell, as I'm sure all of you've done many, many, many times, wondering where, I had the impression there were other spots publicly owned, here and there, little notes might just be a little gravel spot here and there, or a little spot beside a road, or an unpaved area. And I could be very wrong on that.
Yeah, it's pretty clear when we own a piece of property, if a most property is owned in the city by somebody, and we don't have any partial lots or any little zones. And so long as we exclude residential, then these parkway strips in front of houses wouldn't be available, nor would the two residential properties that we own.
As I looked over the last three weeks on Roseburg and other things, the thought I had was that you could approach this ordinance in at least a couple of different ways. You could approach it through prohibition, saying what you cannot do, or specifically where you cannot go. Or you could approach it through prohibition and name someplace where you could go. Or you could approach it through permission, where you say overnight sleeping is allowed on publicly owned property in Crestwell with the following exclusions. And then you could exclude all the places where it's not allowed, and not name places where it is allowed. And I discovered that's what many of the cities in Lane County were doing. They were approaching it rather through the idea of permission. You can sleep overnight with the following time restrictions in place and manner restrictions in place. And then, under exclusion, Roseburg excludes publicly owned properties, but then they specifically name one park, but not all the other parks in Roseburg. And when it comes to parks, they say not within 100 feet of a play structure or an area that is permitted. So I asked the question, it sounds to me like Roseburg is saying all of our parks are open for overnight sleeping, so long as it's not close to a waterway, and it's not within 100 feet of a play structure, or near a permitted area. But otherwise, Roseburg parks are open for sleeping overnight. Whereas many of the other ordinances I read specifically prohibited all camping in parks. But Roseburg does not say that, unless I'm mistaken. Counselor Schuck?
I make a motion that we move... I move to table this discussion. What we are doing right now is work session work. We came here this evening with three versions of an ordinance to vote on, and we're not doing that. We're having a work session, and we need to suspend this discussion for work session.
We have a motion on the floor to table further discussion.
Table means you're not going to discuss this at all any further. I would make a motion that we suspend discussion of this. Hold all remarks, all comments until our next work session.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Counselor Holt, you second the motion? We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Well, I'll speak first. I still believe we can make amendments that are not that difficult, and get her done tonight, and maybe even pass an ordinance tonight. Or if not, take it to another work session. Counselor Schuck?
What we're doing is, we're hearing your opinion about driving around Crestwell, and we're talking about Roseburg, Roseburg, Roseburg. And if our intention was simply to copy another city, we could have saved the citizens a lot of money in our attorney preparing these ordinances for her to vote on. And that is upsetting to me, as I'm sure you can tell by my mannerisms. And I cannot discuss this anymore. This is work session work, and we have, we're almost an hour in here to simple amendments. And they're not simple. This is not simple. We're not getting anywhere. We have not made any traction at all.
All right. Floor is open for council discussion. Counselor Clark?
I respectfully disagree. And the reason that I respectfully disagree is, I think, in the conversations that we've had in past work sessions, that what we have talked about is that we have the capability with this body to be able to move an ordinance forward and then make amendments as needed to be able to move that forward. And we can do that in a city council session. And so I do believe that this is, that it's appropriate for us to be discussing these amendments. And I... Amendment, it's a brand-new ordinance.
Excuse me. Counselor Holt has, Counselor Clark has the floor.
And so I also think, too, that, again, I think that we run the risk of if we're not considering amendments in this... I believe that we are running the risk of running out of time by at least not, by not talking about this. So that's it.
All right. Manager Amber?
Just a comment on work sessions. Work sessions are not required. Council meetings are. We have a custom where we discuss things at work sessions, which are, by the council's design, much more relaxed, allow for more public input. But a work session is not a requirement, actually. So there aren't things that are work session work, because it's all city council work. But city council does have a lot of discussions in their work session, because it makes sense to have that kind of relaxed atmosphere to really work through issues. And this is a more formal sort of setting. But you cannot take action in a work session, whereas you can in a city council meeting.
Okay. I'm looking for counselors who have not spoken on the motion, to please do so, if you would like to. Counselor Castillo?
Sure. I came here tonight prepared for a long meeting and to amend. Amend, amend. I'm always come prepared to a council meeting to amend. If I have something I want to change, that's the time. Can't amend anything at a work session.
Counselor Clark, Counselor Smith, excuse me.
I agree. I came here with multiple amendments. I respect you guys down on that end. You don't want to stay late. I got almost a six-month-old baby at home. I'd like to get home, too. But I'd like to get this done, and I'm more than happy to get it done in front of everybody tonight. And if we have to have a special session or a special meeting, it's going to be hours there. What's the difference now and then? Unless she has something that she needs to get done, then I'm not sure how that works. But I'm okay with moving forward respectfully.
Counselor Osborne? Any comments?
I don't think we're that... I don't think we're that far off on the third ordinance.
It's the second amendment, isn't it? It's the second ordinance that you've been doing?
Okay. There only, there's... Okay. When I looked at everything, the second ordinance hit most of what I was interested Like I said, most, but not all. So I... What kind of amendments do we all want to add? Do we want to start with one of these, number two, and then just work from there before and end it? Or can we not even agree on one of them to work on?
Counselor Holt?
I think the issue here is that we stopped our public meeting and started having a discussion. Like, if we're going to do this, if we're going to amend it tonight, let's get it going. Let's make the motions, let's get it going. We're not just sit here and hear about what happened at your wonderful meeting that you went to and stuff like that. I appreciate that, and I can see how some of that is valid, but we got to get this meeting going.
Any further discussion? All right. Grace, would you read the motion that's on the floor?
Counselor Schuck made a motion to suspend discussion of this until next work session. Counselor Holt seconded.
All right. We will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion fails. So I'm going to ask if there are other counselors who have amendments that they would like to add. And if so, Grace, please make note of these as we go. Other counselors who have amendments, we were working off of version two.
I think we need to vote, don't we, on what version we're working on?
Before you speak out, you need to raise your hand. I will call on you. We were looking at version two, and we were making amendments. So I'm just asking if there's any other amendments that are to be raised. Counselor Holt?
This seems, this whole process right now seems very inappropriate to me. I don't think we've made a decision on what version. Are you making a motion that we're amending these? Is that what I'm hearing? Is this a motion to amend?
I have not made a motion to amend. I have recommended some amendments for consideration.
Okay. So then we vote on it after the recommendation, correct?
I'm asking if there are other amendments that people are recommending, so we can compile a list, and then decide what to do with that list.
For version two?
It could be version two or version three. The only difference between the two versions was that one, specific place on place, which is amended here. So whether it's version two or version three, it's the same exact amendment.
Then I think we should state that.
Well, it's stated here in the recommendation that we're changing, we're changing two substantially. I've heard, I've heard recommendations not to change three, and that number four doesn't need to be changed. Page three, page... So all I've heard discussion's on is time, place. I asked the question on manner. Ross indicated that that would remain the same. Are there other counselors who have amendments to either version or version three?
That's better. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
I have a motion I talked about earlier, and Counselor Castillo mentioned I would like to add, I like the motion, like to add language.
Are you making a motion, or are you wanting to make a list of recommendations?
No, I'm making a motion to add language.
Is this an amendment to be added to the list of amendments? Or is this a new motion to be voted on separate from any other amendment?
To be separate to be voted on.
Okay. Counselor Smith, you have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to add language to ordinance 557, version two, specifically beginning with section one, number three, P, that would add all animals be securely attached to their owner and/or an unmovable object or subject to violation of law.
So state that again. This is section one? This is page four?
Version two is section one, three, P.
Page four, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd just like to add, all animals be always securely attached to their owner, crated or an unmovable object.
All right. Is there a second on the floor?
I have a question.
We have a motion on the floor, so we first of all have to have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Counselor Holt, second the motion. All right. Now we're open for discussion of the motion. Counselor Holt?
Can that amendment apply to versions two and three?
Yes. Sorry to not say that.
That's what my question was. I didn't want to second it before I asked.
I apologize if I did.
That's okay.
I have written down the section two and three, specifically starting with two.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Council discussion. So I would... Counselor Clark?
Oh, I was just going to ask if we have that in writing, so that we can look at it.
I do.
Thank you.
I have a question for our sergeant. Does that in any way add to, or for Cliff in public works, does that in any way add to the work you must do if animals have to be crated?
So I don't know from the public works...
Wait a minute, this is not the right one. Hang on, this is not the right one. Go ahead.
From the sheriff's office perspective, there's, I don't think that there would be any obligation for us to provide crates for somebody. And I think it's an either-or situation. If they have a crate, and they can crate their animal, then it's in compliance. If they don't have a crate, then they'd have to provide their own leash. I don't think that that provides any burden on the sheriff's office to provide those items, unless I'm misunderstanding the question.
Cliff?
Yeah, I agree. I don't think it has any bearing on public works. The way I understand it, is crating, they have to provide their own, so no extra bearing on us.
So then, a question and clarification. So your motion was that animals would be on leash or crated?
Yes.
So that if someone had an animal, was on a leash, then they didn't need to have a crate?
Yes.
So long as the animal was either in...
Securely attached at all times to its owner, or it was in a crate, so it could not hurt anybody taking advice from what other officers had spoken at this meeting.
Securely attached or crated?
Yeah.
Okay. At the council discussion.
I think that it's a good addition to it. It defines things more thoroughly. And it already says you can't leave the animal unattended. You can't tie it up someplace and then wander off someplace.
Okay. There's no further discussion. We will vote on this motion. Grace, will you read the motion?
Counselor Smith, this is an amendment to either version two or three, that all animals be secured, securely attached to their owners or crated. Counselor Holt seconded.
All right. Counsel will proceed. Manager Amber?
Didn't the motion also include, or attach to an unmovable object? Yes, it did.
All right. Grace, could you note that? All right. So noted. Counsel will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Are there any further other amendments to be made, recommended amendments to be made? Counselor Holt?
I am curious. Well, let's go to section one, C. Oh my gosh, it's hard to follow. No, I guess it's under time, under section one, item B. I would like to make a motion that we strike item B from there. I don't, I think that if our ordinances are called out, I just have a, I don't think anybody, not one person, regardless of title, should be solely responsible to make subjective, potentially subjective decisions regarding these things. And so I motion that we strike item B under time for both versions two and three.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I'm going to ask if, Cliff, can you step in the hallway and find out what the noise is? And ask him to please... Ask him to either please move downstairs or cease. Thank you. All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Council discussion. Counselor Smith?
I second it, just in that same breath of, I think if we've set the ordinance, it's set, it's done, unless there's an absolute emergency, I don't understand why one person does need it. I think since we all voted on it, it's already set in stone. I don't know why we need to have that version there. There might be extremely certain sentences I can't think of right now, but I agree. I don't know why it's there.
Other counselors? We have to speak. Counselor Holt, Counselor Clark?
Thank you. In versions two and versions three, I actually really liked this amendment, because I can think of a number of severe weather things that may happen for us, whether that be severe rain, whether that be severe heat, severe cold, that there may be a, that there may be a need to be able to restrict that.
be a need to be able to restrict that. And I really like the flexibility of that as well, because sometimes we anticipate, you know, we anticipate, for example, things like a little bit of snow and then we get a lot of snow, way more than is anticipated. And so, I liked the flexibility that was within that. As I was thinking about that, I was also thinking about, you know, when our state declares like a state of an emergency based off of a weather event. So that was what was informing my thinking around that and what it is that I liked. But I liked it.
Councillor Shuck, I believe you had your hand up.
Could we ask the city attorney his thought process in putting enforcement of time restrictions may be suspended? Verpich?
That was copied from Roseburg. So the ordinance that made the rounds, I just lifted that right from Roseburg. And I liked it because it actually seemed to allow the flexibility depending on the circumstances. So I was envisioning circumstances where potentially someone would be unable to move their campsite because of a snow event or who knows what. And it would give your city manager some of that specific enforcement flexibility. But it's your, I'm just proposing wording and you get the final call. And I don't, it doesn't need to be there. And so you can certainly remove it if you want.
You're going to second. We're going to have any other councillors who wish to speak to it and we'll come back to you. So, my thought would be that severe weather can not only impact the person who's trying to, as the law states, keep warm and dry, but it can also impact the ability of our law enforcement or our public works to get there. Because severe weather takes a lot of work from our public works and from our law enforcement. And so they may be out doing who knows what because of the weather. And then if we're thinking, oh, you also have to get by to check on such and such and make sure they're moving, I like the flexibility that it also allows for us to respond to a need as it arises. And there may be a situation with an individual who does have an issue, a need, and I would think that if it was an ongoing, Manager Amber would be reporting to us rather quickly. So I like the flexibility in there for what it brings. Councillor Smith.
Couldn't the Sheriff's Department do that? I mean, if it is severe weather, I don't think anybody here is going to be able to make it, to make that judgment call. And the Sheriff's is the one that are going to enforce it. And I think we give them latitude to have compassion and understand the situation. So I kind of focus more on the individual's unique circumstances rather than the weather because it just, that didn't make sense. If it's that severe, then nobody's going to be able to get there anyway. So, nobody's going to be there and enforce it, so it's a big deal. So I don't think it has to be that big a deal, but I still agree to, we should just remove it and let the sheriff, allow him to have that opportunity, since he has the ability and authority to do that in pretty much every other situation.
Manager Amber, do you have any input?
The only thing that I think that could be in conflict with that is in the situation where we have an emergency or some kind of natural disaster. And then that the city manager has powers that would supersede that.
Councillor Shuck, can I, Councillor Holt?
It does say by order of the city manager or designate. So, our city manager could designate Cliff in Public Works or Sergeant from Lane County or, you know, Mr. Piper, her second in command. So, I'm happy with that being there.
Councillor Holt.
I think that by having this kind of language, we may open ourselves up to people thinking that we're giving special treatment to one person and not to them. This is why I want to remove this language. I think that it's important not to open ourselves up to even an image of playing favoritism or something along those lines. And I am not saying by any means that Manager Amber would do that. This is just how I'm looking at this language.
Okay. Any further counsel input? We have a motion on the floor, a second. Grace, would you please read it to us?
Councillor Holt made a motion to strike item B, version two and three, under section one. Councillor Smith seconded.
All right. Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion fails. So since we're making motions, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we amend the ordinance, version two or three, by replacing the language under place, which is page three of, I think, both versions. We would totally strike what is written under place and replace it with this paragraph that you all have here, A. And Grace, you would need to readjust my ones, twos, and threes to get that accurate. But there's a one, two, three, what?
Can you restate that, please?
Yes, I will restate it. So, this would be to amend version two and three, page four, page three, item number two, place, to replace it with this language. A camping is prohibited at all times in the following locations. Number one, interadjacent to any residentially zoned or any properties legally residentially used regardless of zoning. Two, anywhere within 1,000 feet of an educational facility. Three, anywhere within 100 feet of a public library. Four, any, any place where camping, a camp or camp materials create a physical impediment to emergency or non-emergency ingress, egress, or access to property, whether private or public, or on public sidewalks or other public rights of way, including but not limited to driveways providing access to vehicles and entrances or exits from buildings and/or other real property. Five, any vehicle lane or bicycle lane within any public right of way. Six, immediately adjacent to any city-owned buildings or anywhere on airport property or anywhere on or adjacent to city-owned water or sewer treatment facilities or water storage sites or adjacent to the fire district building. And seven, the following city-owned parks, North First Street and Cobalt Lake Pocket Park, South Second Street Park, Bicycle Wayside Park, parentheses, Cloverdale Road and Deb Cootie Road, Cobalt Activity Center, Garden Lake Park, Grasslands Bicycle Pump Track, Holt Park. End of my amendments. Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Councillor Holt. Council discussion of the motion. Councillor Holt.
Mostly for clarification, this would replace, this would pretty much bring both versions to one version now, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I do like this amendment suggestion. Thank you.
Councillor Clark.
I also like this amendment. I think that it still provides a space where individuals can be. I think that as long as it meets, like I said, as long as there is still a space with all of this, I think that that is, I think that's great and I'm in favor of that. One question that I would have on it is, I think the point that Councillor Shuck brought up is the piece around any properties legally residentially used regardless of zoning. So that would be the only piece that I would have questions on. And so we might make an amendment to an amendment, which could get very tricky for us, but I believe we can do it. That's it.
So clarification, the motion is to adopt these amendments, so you would be amending the motion. Okay. Other councillor comments? Discussion? Looking at this?
Are you going to make, did you make that motion? Oh, okay.
I did not make that motion. That was one of the things I was considering and that's something that we might want to consider as a group.
Take no further hands. We will vote.
I had one up.
Councillor Holt.
Sorry. I know I talk a lot. So, I agree with you, Councillor Clark. I think that, I think we can just strike the word legally, right? In or adjacent to any residentially zoned area or any properties residentially used regardless of zoning, because people could legally or illegally be using property, correct? So I make a motion that we strike the word legally. We amend the original motion to strike the word legally from A1. I'll second that.
We have a second on the floor from Councillor Shuck. So, I have a question for Ross. Did you, you kind of posed that as a question, it sounded like Councillor Holt, about removing the word legally, whether that was necessary. And I kind of want to defer to Councillor Shuck as well.
I think I answered in my head, but yes.
So, I kind of wondered whether the sentence, if it simply said in or adjacent to any residentially zoned area, period, would accomplish what we're talking about. And this is a question for Ross.
So, the wording that is currently on this paper is broader because you have properties in the city that are not residentially zoned where people reside. For instance, your downtown commercial area, there are residential uses and residences in your downtown commercial. So that is a property that is not zoned residential, but is property legally, I think legally is, it's not really material. I'm fine with or without it, but it's residentially used. So, that is a broader prohibition. So if you struck residentially used regardless of zoning, you would be narrowing the prohibition, which I don't think is what you want.
No, thank you for answering my question. Okay. Additional council discussion? All right, we have an amendment to the motion. Grace, would you read the amendment?
Councillor Holt made an amendment to the motion to strike the word legally from A1 and Councillor Shuck seconded.
All right. Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion to amend passes unanimously. We return to the original motion, which was to adopt, page three, place, the items that were read. Any further discussion of that motion? If not, then we will proceed to vote. Would you read the motion?
Mayor Stram made a motion to amend version two and three, page three, item two, place.
Do you need to read the whole thing?
Do you want me to read it?
Since we all have it in front of us.
You all have it in front of you.
And we didn't change the language on any of these.
Didn't change the language.
Councillor, are you fine with Grace not reading in entirety?
Yes.
We have it in front of us. Okay. So council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Versions two and three are amended as voted upon. Are there any further amendments to the ordinance? Any further amendments to be made? If not, then I move that we adopt ordinance version three as amended. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councillor Holt seconds the motion. We've amended it twice, believe. Okay. Council discussion. Councillor Clark.
I just wanted to clarify, sorry. I just wanted to clarify that with this amendment, then there is zero difference between version two and version three.
Attorney Williamson is nodding his head.
That is correct.
That is correct. You still have the floor, councillor.
Perfect. I was going to say, I also just wanted to, again, triple-check that version three as amended is still objectively reasonable and meets all of the criteria that we need to meet to be consistent with the Circuit Nine decision, the state of Oregon Supreme Court decision, as well as the state law.
In my opinion, yes, so long as this allows some place in the city, which I understand it does. But, you know, I haven't, I haven't gone through the city and compared it. But as I understand from your city manager, there is a place.
Councillor Allenborn.
With the green passing that we aren't changing the hours that you suggested, is that correct? Or keep, okay.
Any further discussion before we take a monumental vote that has taken us a long time to get here?
Just clarification on the hours. So we are going with the Roseburg recommendation or the 10 to 7 Thursday? Okay. Thank you.
Manager Amber, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to ask Ross a question, if that's all right.
Okay.
So we had an ordinance that was read the first time and was not voted on. So is this the first vote? So there has to be two if this is not unanimous?
Yeah, there is, yeah, you have to have two votes if it's not unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, no further discussion. We will proceed to vote. Will you read the motion, Grace?
Mayor Stram made a motion to adopt version three as amended. Councillor Holt seconded.
Is there any question on the amendments, councillors? All right. As it says in ordinance, if it is voted on unanimously, it passes and goes into law as an emergency ordinance, because I believe that's stated at the back. So this would go into effect July 1st. If it is not unanimous, it will come back for a second vote. So, council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You will take a brief recess to go to the bathroom or do whatever you need to do.
We got enough.
Ross, you guys have patience.
In regards to the versions. Just a small piece of that. That's what I was trying to get to.
What'd you say?
The word Jasons.
I think they'll do that.
I don't think, I know what was happening.
Express that to everybody.
So is time, place, and manner.
It is in lots of other ordinance.
We have a problem where all kinds will have problems.
So you're saying they have word Jasons anywhere in the ordinance?
I mean, I'm not in a table.
Because we run into too many problems.
But I would imagine that something, send an email to our manager. And we can talk to the manager and we can amend the ordinance very easily.
That's why I was just trying to see, there's a couple of small-
And industrial.
From those that have already went down that road and got screwed.
Autoactive reactive.
Can we talk something not related?
And to do vertical farming and do all of this stuff.
Or something like this.
It's huge progress.
Now we gotta get to all of our budget.
I mean, it's absolutely against economic development, it's against good jobs, work of years, it's against housing issues, it's against so many things. And it doesn't have to be this way, as far as I can tell. It never does this before. So why are they doing it now? Can we really, can we use legal precedent or something against them? I mean, I'm so mad. Yeah, well, Scott comes from a different age. But maybe if I find out who he's talking to, we can talk to them, too.
Okay, let's return, as the hour is getting late.
I have so much.
Unless you use it and look back on it.
There might be some, like, things like this that might be okay to keep, but all this other stuff.
Then, Grace, if you put notes in it, give it to Grace.
I don't think, most of them I don't, I should just start and recycle. I've been gathering all this stuff together.
You have it written there, and it's not on new record.
See, somebody sent me a message about.
Leaking everywhere.
Okay, let's see, I need more water. And I'll have to call a meeting if I.
I was thinking, let you forward it to me. See if I can, we can arc out the rest of it.
I think we can. Okay, let's have everybody return. Who are we missing? Couple people in the bathroom. Okay, I believe all the councilors are returned, so we'll get our microphone here and we'll pick back up. All right, we are resuming the meeting. We're on the page 2, and we are on item D, which is Development Moratorium. We begin with a public hearing. So the City Council is eager to receive any comments, input from the public about the proposed moratorium. Resolution 2023-07, a resolution approving a moratorium on development pursuant to ORS 197, period 505, to 197, period 540, based on limited sanitary sewer capacity as ordered by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. So, public hearing is now open. If you wish to speak, please fill out a form, bring it to Grace, and we will be encouraged to hear from you. Public hearing is now closed, so Manager Amber, you give a report of this item.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have before you tonight is a resolution creating a moratorium on development within the city, within the city of Cresswell, in order to accommodate the MAO from the DEQ. This will go into effect on the area served by our wastewater treatment system, which exists on the west side of I-5. The east side of I-5 is not impacted by the moratorium. The moratorium will last for seven years, and every six months will need to be reviewed and renewed. The next city council meeting, you will also have to review a plan for meeting the, we have to develop a plan that explains how we plan on working our way out of the moratorium. So there's considerable amount of work that needs to be done in association with this. And our city attorney is here to answer any legal questions we might have, and I can try and answer any questions you might have. And Cliff is here to answer questions regarding our sewer treatment, our sewer collection system, which is actually the reason why the moratorium is going into place.
All right, councilors, questions for Manager Amber, or Cliff, or Ross? Oh, I had a question on the mutual agreement and order on page 2. It talks about the $12,000 civil penalty. And then on page 7, item G, it talks about it being reduced, which I like that idea, but then it seemed to say it's reduced to $2,400. And then there's also $9,600 that goes someplace else in here, so that it doesn't seem like it's really reduced. Am I reading this correctly?
That's correct, it's not reduced. It's just, the civil penalty is divided into different areas, and what we chose to do was make a division of that penalty, so it did not go to the state. It went instead to the Coast Fork of Little Millamette Watershed Council. So they are doing projects. We cannot benefit from the project, but at least we are helping someone who makes sure that our water quality is as good as it can be. So the money, I think, would do a good cause.
And I noticed on page 3 of the resolution, item 5 and 6 both give us days. So I kind of looked out there and said August, the council meeting, we have to have a report, and also November work session. So I'll bet you've done that, too. So we have to keep on a schedule to have the regular reports to the council. Okay, thank you. Other counsel questions for staff? If not, then I'm entertaining a motion on item 6D. Counselor Clark.
I move that the City Council adopt Resolution 2023-07, a resolution approving a moratorium on development pursuant to ORS 197.505 to 197.540, based on limited sanitary sewer capacity as ordered by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Counselor Smith seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Grace, would you read the motion?
Counselor Clark made a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-07, a resolution approving a moratorium on development pursuant to ORS 197.505 to ORS 197.540, based on limited sanitary sewer capacity as ordered by the Oregon Department of Quality.
Right.
Counselor Smith seconded.
Thank you, Grace. Counsel will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We move to item E. This is budget approval. So we begin with public hearings. The City Council will hold public hearings to receive public comment regarding the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. The first budget, the first public hearing, is on the budget, making appropriations, and categorizing and levying added lower taxes. If you wish to speak during the public hearing, please fill out a form, bring it to Grace. We would be delighted to hear from you, and the public hearing is now open.
What's the discussion there?
Public hearing, public hearing is now closed. We move to the second public hearing, which is on Resolution 2023-09, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. The Budget Committee has recommended using the state revenue sharing fund, being for work on comprehensive plan update and community contributions for nonprofit emergency needs, both appropriated in the general fund. If you wish to speak on this item, please fill out a request form, bring it to Grace, and we would be delighted to hear from you. The public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed, so note of clarification to the councilors. Usually when we get our agenda items, they come looking like this. For this particular item, what was in our packet, because I think y'all had paper packets in addition, was something that looked like this, that lined up all the budget resolutions and all the public hearings, one after another, which is what we're doing now. We're holding public hearings on all the budget items, so it looked like this. So we're gonna continue with the public hearings, then we will move to resolutions, bang, 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 that all have to do with the budget.
What is 6F on the top?
6F on the computer. So it's before that. It's after that, in fact. It's after that.
Right here, right here.
Oh, my God, I had it right on there.
Right there, okay.
That's hilarious. All right.
All right, so we are on to our next public hearing, which is public hearing on Resolution 2023-14, a resolution establishing water service fees and water rates for users of the Cresswell Municipal Water System, and rescinding Resolution 2022-13, and Resolution 2023-15, a resolution establishing sewer user fees, sewer service fees, and charges for users of the Cresswell Municipal Sewers Facilities, and rescinding resolution number 2022-14. If you wanted to speak to these items, please fill out a request form, bring it to Grace, and we would be delighted to hear from you. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed, and now we move to public hearing on Resolution 2023-16, a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 2022-15, and establishing a public safety fee and charges in accordance with the provisions of Cresswell Municipal Code, Chapter 13, period 3, 0, is now open. If you wish to speak to this, please fill out a form, bring it to Grace, and we would be delighted to hear from you. Public hearing is now closed. We've moved to item number F on your agenda, which is fiscal year July 1, 2020, should be 2023, right?
It should be, yes.
To June 30, 2024, budget resolutions. Return to Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Councilors, and, yeah, thank you for catching that scripters there in the agenda. It is fiscal year 2324 that we're looking forward to, beginning July 1st. Before you have Resolution 2023-08, that is the appropriations that come from the big giant book that we've been looking at as the Budget Committee has approved. I did notice a scripters there under total appropriation for all funds. I want to point that out and make it very clear. It was, it was, it states in the resolution, $12,960,721. Does everyone see that? That should actually be $12,690,721, so the 6 and the 9 that transpose there. That makes the math work. Total appropriations for the adopted budget is that amount, and then you have your unappropriated and reserve amounts, that's your hedge fund balances, and the total adopted budget is the $28,516,913. Again, this comes from the approved budget from the Budget Committee, and was noticed in LB1 in the newspaper. So make sure that all tied out. Are there any questions on the budget resolution?
Okay, any counsel discussion of the resolution to adopt the budget? If no discussion, then we will entertain, I will entertain a motion to adopt the budget as presented. Counselor Castillo.
I'll make a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
Counselor Clark.
I'll second.
I have a second on the floor. Counselor Clark, any further discussion or amendments? Mr. Piper, do you have an amendment?
I just wanted to make clear, Counselor. Counselor Castillo, did you also add and categorize it and levying ad valorem taxes? That's really important for the Lee County Assessor.
I will amend my motion to include ad valorem taxes. Thank you, Mr. Piper.
All right. So Counselor Clark, will you second the amended motion? The adjusted motion?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Grace, will you read the motion?
Motion was Counselor Castillo, motion to adopt the budget as presented, and then amended to include categorizing and levying ad valorem taxes. And Counselor Clark seconded.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We move to Resolution 2023-09, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues. Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Mayor Stram. This resolution is to declare that you'd like to receive the state shared revenues. Once this is adopted, it'll go to the Oregon Department of Revenue, and they can send the city those shared revenues.
All right, any questions for Mr. Piper? If not, then I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Smith.
I think I got the right one. I move to approve Resolution 2023-09, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues as presented.
A motion on the floor, is there a second? Counselor Shutt seconds the motion. Any further council discussion? If not, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We move to Resolution 23-10, a resolution regarding state revenue sharing funds. Mr. Piper.
All right, thank you. This is just a follow-up to that. This is declaring the city offers at least four or more of the services that are required to receive state shared revenues.
Council questions for Mr. Piper? If not, then I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Castillo.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-10, a resolution regarding state revenue sharing funds as presented.
A motion on the floor, is there a second? Counselor Smith seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not, council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Resolution 2023-11, Volunteer Resolution for Fiscal Year 2023-24, a resolution extending the city of Cresswell's workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Cresswell. Mr. Piper.
Thank you. Every year, this is required to cover the city council or the city's workers' comp policy. And then there are some public events that are also listed. Citywide cleanup, Harbor Day, National Lightout, Pride and the Sheriff. We do have one of those. And then under item E, 5E, it says teen cert, but I believe we, it's now called cert. So I would strike teen out of that. But this will offer some workers' comp coverage in case volunteers are injured on the job.
All right, council discussion? Counselor Smith.
Can injury be emotional?
It's a serious question, I think.
I'm emotionally injured right now.
Question, does this cover members of the city council serving in their role as city councilors?
Yes.
Yes. So you will need to speak with Mr. Piper or Manager Amber, and file a claim by leave.
Do you lie?
Process. Okay, so when we come to a motion, if there's motion made, please adjust your motion to include that the resolution is striking the word teen from Section 5E. Any further discussion? I'm entertaining a motion on Resolution 2023-11. Counselor Castillo.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-11, a resolution extending the city of Cresswell's workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Cresswell as presented, striking the word teen.
5A.
5A.
Teen. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I think it needs to be as amended, striking, sorry.
And please? Counselor Holt.
Correction, I'm not seconding. I'm trying to make a correction. I think he needed to read it as amended, not presented.
So Counselor Holt is recommending that your motion would be a motion to adopt this item with the following amendment to language on 5A.
With the following amendment, striking the word teen.
All right. Counselor, Manager Amber.
It's perfectly fine to make the motion as amended. You don't have to say what it is. You're just noting that you accepted it as amended. Just for future reference.
So the original motion was to adopt as presented, and then he changed, added some things. So it would be to adopt the motion with as amended, and then say what the amendment was.
To strike.
It's reflected in the record as to what the amendment is. So he can just read the title as amended.
Okay, thank you.
You want me to read it again?
I think we're good.
I'll second that for you now, though.
So we have a second from Counselor Holt. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Resolution Number 2023-12, a resolution adopting the pay scales for fiscal year 2023-24 for the city of Cresswell. Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilors. This resolution just formally adopts the 12 steps pay scale by position. It reflects 4% COLA, but each step is clearly defined as to what that amount is.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Piper? All right, council discussion? If not, then I'm entertaining a motion on item, on this item. Counselor Clark.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-12, a resolution adopting the pay scales for fiscal year 2023-24 as presented.
A motion on the floor, is there a second? Counselor Castillo seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Counselor Smith, did you vote?
I did.
Okay, let's do it again. All those in favor, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion passes with Counselor Smith and Holt in opposition. Okay, we move back to the agenda to item G. This is Resolution Number 2023-13, a resolution adjusting the basic rental fee set forth in the existing airport leases between the city of Cresswell and individual leases of property located on Hobby Field Airport. Is this a Shelley report or a general report? Mr. Piper.
We just did rock, paper, scissors, and I lost.
I thought that was important. That's funny.
Actually, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Councilors. In all seriousness, this resolution is an annual adjustment to the leases at the airport based on the CPI. Section 6 of many of the contracts state that the CPI to be used is the Consumer Price Index of Portland, which was then discontinued. And the most, the suggested measurement now is the Western CPI, Western Region. And as of January of each year, the CPI for Western Region in January of 2023 was 6.3%, and the resolution reflects that.
All right, questions for Mr. Piper? Council discussion? Being done, I'm entertaining a motion on Resolution 2023-13. Counselor Smith.
I move. I move to adopt Resolution 2023-13, a resolution adjusting to basic rental fee set forth in the existing airport lease between the city of Cresswell and individual leases of property located on Hobby Field Airport.
A motion on the floor, is there a second? Counselor Osborne seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We move to item H. This is Resolution 2023-14, a resolution establishing water service fees and water rates for users of the Cresswell Municipal Water System, and rescinding Resolution Number 2022-13. Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilors. As you know, the, every year, the Water Rate Advisory Committee meets consisting of three councilors and three members of the community. The committee met twice in February and recommended a 1% reincrease to the city council at the February work session. The resolution reflects that change. I can take any questions this time.
All right, any council discussion of this item? Being done, then I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Clark.
I move that the city council approve Resolution 2023-14, a resolution establishing water service fees and water rates for users of the Cresswell Municipal Water System, and rescinding Resolution Number 2022-13.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Counselor Smith seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes with Counselor Castillo in opposition. Resolution 2023-15, a resolution establishing sewer user fees, sewer service fees, and charges for the users of the Cresswell Municipal Sewer Works Facilities, and rescinding Resolution 2022-14. Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilors. Again, the Water Rate Advisory Committee is required to meet under the charter to discuss water rates. They also discuss the sewer rates. And the sewer rates were looked at and a recommendation was given to the city council to raise rates by 5% for the coming fiscal year. This resolution reflects that change. I'm willing to answer any questions if there are any.
Council discussion? Being done, I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Clark.
I move that the city council approve Resolution 2023-15, a resolution establishing sewer user fees, sewer service fees, and charges for users of the Cresswell Municipal Sewer Works Facilities, and rescinding Resolution 2022-14.
A motion on the floor, is there a second? Counselor Shutt seconds the motion. Any further council discussion? Counselor Castillo.
I just wanted to point out, I believe there's a typo in the suggested motion, just for pointing it out sake. Cresswell L Municipal.
Unless it's red, then it doesn't matter that there's a typo there. The motion is what's red. Did you read an L in there?
I did not.
She did not? Right. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We move to our Resolution 2023-16, a resolution rescinding Resolution 2022-15, and establishing a public safety fee and charges in accordance with the provisions of Cresswell Municipal Code, Chapter 13, Period 3.0. Mr. Piper.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Councilors. This resolution would increase the public safety fee by $1.19 from $17 per month per unit to $18.19 per unit per month, rather. This is to make, to, to meet the needs of the new sheriff's contract that was just adopted this evening.
Questions for Mr. Piper? Council discussion? I'm entertaining a motion on Resolution 2023-16. Counselor Castillo.
I move that the, no. I move that the city council adopt Resolution 2023-16, a resolution rescinding Resolution 2022-15, and establishing a public safety fee and charges in accordance with the provisions of Cresswell Municipal Code, Chapter 13.30.
A motion on the floor, is there a second? Second from Counselor Osborne. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Although opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. On the next item, Counselor Holt pointed out to me that the resolution, as it's typed in our agenda, incorrectly listed as charging off delinquent utility accounts. But the resolution before you is as follows. Resolution Number 2023-17, a resolution charging off court fines by state order on remission of fines. Thank you, Counselor Holt, for catching that. And a report from Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilors. Good catch, Counselor Holt. We did, we do this annually. We look at utility counts as well. We didn't have any this year. So that was a first. But we did get a document that was sent from the governor's office, former governor's office. In the presiding judge, Judge Palmer also received the, the order on the remission of fines pursuant to Article 5, Section 14 of the Oregon Constitution. It was received along with Exhibit A listing specific court dockets. I don't see it in the packet. I did review it and submit it, but it may be that it was private information because it was related to court cases. Not sure why it didn't get in the court in the council packet, but the governor's office had specific cases that were to be charged off. The auditors recommended that they be written off for accounting purposes because legally they'd be uncollectible. The total amount of the charged-off uncollectible accounts is $3,625.55. I recommend passing, approving the resolution allowing us to charge off the court fines according to state order.
All right, questions for Mr. Piper? Counselor Smith.
Who deemed these fees were not collectible?
Of the state of Oregon. Yeah, by, by an order signed by Governor Kate Brown.
So the fees that are, are they, these fees that are pertaining to Cresswell, right? They're fees that we have charged, and she decided we should collect them.
Yeah, they gave us specific docket numbers and account and names of the persons. And Grace, our court clerk, she, she went and verified that those were in our system.
Counselor Holt.
I'd really like to know the nature of the crimes that we're just not going to charge people for. I was hoping to be able to ask you that tonight since they weren't in the packet.
They wouldn't be circuit court violations. It would be traffic.
They're not circuit court. It's municipal. So it's going to be traffic violations or code violations. It's not going to be criminal.
So the state of Oregon can tell us what to do like that? So the state of Oregon can tell us what to do like that? Or do they recommend and we can pick or choose whether or not we listen?
It was a mandated and there was no criteria given. Nobody knows what criteria the governor put into this order. The order was just sent out and we ended up with just a few cases and there are some courts that had several cases.
What is the mandate that we're following?
It was a, a remission pushed down by the governor.
I need more information. I can't support this without more information.
So looking at the documents we have here, one of them is the resolution which we have. The other is an order on remission. So I gather that what, what, what you had to present to us was the order, not the listing of names and what the cases were, but an actual order that came down from the government. And, and my comment would be, I recall annually that we go through this process to write off delinquent utilities, people who haven't paid water, sewer for years and years and we're not going to collect and we write it off. This is the first time I remember an order to remit these kinds of items. Is this, is this a new thing as far as you know?
This was the first time that I know that it's been done.
This is a brand new thing passed down from the state in order to remit certain fines?
Right, and, and it wasn't just the order. There was Exhibit A attached to that order from, from the governor's office that, that listed these exact accounts.
Specific ones. Okay, that was just a question I had. Manager Amber and then Councilor Shuck.
I just wanted to ask Grace, did this have anything to do with the suspension of licenses?
It did.
And so those that had a fee associated with the suspension of a license was, was, it was taken off as, as a, as something that we can do. So it has to do with a thing that happened at the state where we can no longer suspend somebody for their, we can no longer suspend someone's driver's license. And anyone who had a fine associated because of that suspension, we had to forgive.
We can't suspend licenses anymore?
No.
Did that on the way out.
Oh.
Okay, Councilor Shuck?
That's exactly right. The bill says that.
You, you make your microphone.
Oh, sorry. That's exactly right. The bill says it's forgiving the debt blocking many people from being able to lawfully drive. The inability to pay a traffic fine should not, private person of the ability to lawfully drive to work, school, healthcare appointments, or other locations to meet their daily needs. And it, it does say that the state deemed them not collectible, so they were persons that I'm glad we only had four, that we would not be able to.
I'm asking members of the audience to not interrupt proceedings as we're carrying on.
It excludes misdemeanor or felony traffic cases. So like Grace said, it's just for, our sergeant would know the exact word, but violation, traffic violations.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. Thank you, Manager Amber.
My, my understanding of that when it came out is that it's only for the inability to pay the fine. There's other ways that people's licenses can be suspended by a court. There's certain crimes that if somebody's convicted of, it's an automatic license suspension. There's also, you know, failure to attend hearings, that's a license suspension that the court can impose. It's just the inability basically to say they're not complying by paying the fine. That's how it was explained to me when this came down, so. Licenses are still going to be suspended for certain people, but it's not just going to be because of their financial status if they can't pay a speeding ticket or something.
Thank you. Councilor Clark?
So then just to clarify, so this doesn't take away if someone was found guilty or pled guilty or whatnot to a, a certain crime? That doesn't take away that status. It just removes the fine associated with it?
No.
Counselor, Jim or Sergeant Feldrich, Manager Amber, can you respond to that question? Manager Amber?
It's my understanding that municipal courts cannot suspend licenses anymore because of the hardship that it creates making it to school, to work, to hospitals and things like that. And that's what this law was intended to address. And so the fine is really all that's waived. I don't think the suspension is waived, but it really limits our ability. But Grace is looking like I'm telling you not the truth, so.
In these cases, we did have to release the suspension because it's deemed a hardship on the individual because they can't attend school or they can't attend work to be able to get the money, to be able to pay the fines. We can suspend for failure to appear, but we cannot suspend for failure to comply.
All right, further council discussion? If not, then I'm entertaining a motion. Councilor Clark?
I move that the council approve Resolution Number 2023-17, a resolution charging off court fines by state order on remission of fines as presented.
Motion on the floor is there second? Councilor Osborne seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Council will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes with Councilor Smith. Holt and Shuck in opposition. I believe that brings us to upcoming meetings, which we will have. And then adjournment, thank you all very, very much for your hard work.
Are you sure it's only 10:15?
Michelle, is there like a recycle box up here or?
Have you just take it downstairs?
Yeah.
Have you made notes on it? You have to give it to her. If you haven't, you can recycle it.